Jen, are you ready? We'll get started, mics here, so. And when we have the commissioners here on time, then it's important to start on time, so.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for being here. For anyone who doesn't know, I'm Scott Olson, the Director of Solid Waste for the city. I'm joined with Jen Pickett here, our Recycling Coordinator and Supervisor. And we wanted to get with you today and inform you of some changes that you might see happening in the recycling program, particularly with the residential all-in-one. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jen. She'll give you a little bit of a background of the recycling program and the issues that bring us here today.
Good afternoon. Just to go over a little bit of background of the recycling program that we have in Fargo. In 1990 was when the first drop sites were developed, and those are available throughout Fargo for residents to use any time of the the day or night that they choose. Some of the items that we accept at the drop sites include newsprint, magazines, metal cans, plastics, glass, and cardboard. So at the sites, residents are requested to separate those materials into the correct bins, and then we do the collection of that material and bring it to Minn Kota Recycling for processing and marketing. We currently have 20 drop sites available. And in 2022, we were able to recover 3,726 tons of material from those drop sites. During the spring and through the fall, we also have grass and leaf containers available for residents. So drop sites have been around for quite a while. In 2002, an optional curbside recycling program was developed for residents. It was $3 per month. And if you had one of the blue recycling bins, then we asked residents to separate their recyclables within those bins in paper bags. And the recyclables were collected every other week on your garbage day, the same as we do that now. And if you just notice in the bar graph, the tonnages each year. When we got to 2009, things changed a little bit. The way we collected garbage went to a volume-based system. And then curbside recycling became free, and you'll notice the tonnage is more than double. So recycling has always been popular. When I came onboard in 2010, the participation rate was around 65%. So from 2009 to 2017, we went with that curbside recycling program where residents separated their items within the bins. Then we were able to implement the all-in-one recycling or single stream about halfway through of 2017. And as you can see in the bar graph, the tonnage is doubled again. And then our participation rate went up to about 85 to 90%, so we were very pleased with that. And then with the introduction of that all-in-one program, there was a fee associated with that. It was $3 per month. And it's now $4 per month. And I don't feel like that price detours anybody from the program because it is so easy. Everything just goes all into one bin and still collected every other week. So no more sorting of recyclables. Annual tons collected from 2009 to 2016 was approximately 1,400 when we were separating within the in the bins. In 2017, we had six months of separating and six months of all-in-one recycling. So we saw a jump to almost 2,700 tons collected annually. And since then, we've had the all-in-one every year, and we're right around 4,300 tons a year. So our participation and tonnages have increased greatly during that time. And the next slide just kind of shows you some of the tonnages from our curbside program and the increases that we see. And then also the commercial recycling we offer, the drop sites, and our roll-off service for recyclables. In this picture on the right is bales of the all-in-one recycling. So we collect the recycling and drop it off at Minn Kota Downtown. They bail up that material and send it off to be separated, processed, and marketed to its respective units. Some of the biggest reason that we're here today is we have been requested from Minn Kota Recycling to remove the glass from the all-in-one recycling program. There's a few reasons why we would like to phase that out. A lot of it is unfavorable economics. There's a poor market value for glass. The weight of the glass, it's obviously the heaviest commodity in comparison to plastic bottles or cardboard boxes. The transportation trucks that haul the material from our area down to Minneapolis where the material recovery facilities are, glass is 10 to 20% of our total volume. So just that extra weight of that with the fuel prices and things like that is becoming to make it unfavorable to continue recycling glass. The single stream difficulties in achieving a cost-benefit balance. Some of those things include a compactor truck that collects the material, compacts that waste constantly as they're out doing the collection with enough force to crush a pickup truck, just for give you some kind of a comparison. So naturally, any of the glass that we collect is broken. And those shards become a contaminant, kind of lodging themselves in with a cardboard and getting stuck in magazines and newspapers, as well as the plastic material. So this effectively eliminates its own value for sale as well as that of the other materials. When the materials go to the MRF to get separated, some of those operators are starting to air concerns that the glass particles are posing a danger to their employees as well.
So thank you, Jen. Great job. So when we were presented with this issue, what we wanted to do was kind of find an alternative so that residents still had a path to recycle their glass. And we feel that the best path moving forward is to encourage residents to not only continue to recycle, but to utilize the drop sites as a recycling. And this is the best way to ensure that glass is repurposed with the city, and here's why. In 2018, we opened an inert site at the landfill, which basically separates non-organic material like wood, construction debris, from typical household waste. So within those inert cells that we develop, we can actually take the glass collected at drop sites, crush it, and utilize it on top of our leachate collection system. And we can do this. There's a couple of benefits to it. Firstly, this acts as a filter media, so we don't have to purchase sand that would typically act in that method. And we beneficially get to reuse the glass that's brought to the recycling sites. So this practice has been around for several years, and it is approved by the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. And once the glass gets on-site, it's crushed by our employees. We screen out any contaminants, and then we utilize that as the filter media in those inert cells. I think we have a video here. That kind of shows the process of this from collection to placed out at the landfill. Bring you back to the slideshow here. About that. So as we try to reach out to the public to inform them of this change, here's some of the materials that we'll be using. Press releases, the City of Fargo website, social media, digital advertising campaigns, radio and TV interviews that Jen loves to do, mailings and calendars. We'll attach some decals under recycling bin lids that allow residents to see that glass is no longer allowed here. And we can utilize some informational videos on the public access channel. So our next steps going forward, we want to initiate the public education program and informational outreach right away. We have tentatively agreed with Minn Kota to remove glass from the all-in-one recycling, taking place the first week in, the first full week in March, which will be March 6th. The City of Morehead is also planning to incorporate this change as well at the same time. So we will continue to utilize drop sites for glass recycling, and we'll expand those recycling drop sites as we need, as we see fit. And then lastly, we'll be monitoring the success of this change, enhance any educational programs as needed, and in the event it's deemed necessary, we will further discuss any enforcement actions that might be needed. So we have Steve Iverson with the City of Morehead here is here to support. We also have Mary Aldridge with Minn Kota Recycling, if there's any questions that require her expertise. And we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions of the Commissioners? Commissioner Preston.
Could you review the contract with Minn Kota? What impact this might have on that contract?
We have briefly reviewed that. There isn't much of an impact at the moment, other than obviously if glass is taken out, that would reduce the tonnages that go to them total, the overall tonnages. So we pay by the ton on single-stream material. So that would be the effect.
One other question, if I could. So when you look at the glass that will now go to the landfill, how does it equate with? And what I'm trying to ask here is the reason, or one of the major reasons we went to recycling was the additional life on the landfill. So will doing this cause an increase or a decrease in the in the life of the landfill?
So at the landfill now, as I alluded to a little earlier, we do, we have a separate inert landfill that was permitted back in 2016 and began in 2018. So that, the reason that went into place was to take away some of that construction debris that doesn't break down and put it in a separate spot while maintaining the full life of the MSW side, which would be the typical household garbage. So the addition to this glass in larger quantities would not affect the MSW landfill lifespan at all at this point. It may reduce very minimally the inert lifespan that we have, but that is, that's still pretty long, pretty broad. Just for context, in our single stream, it's estimated that at most, we probably have about 20% total tonnages is glass, which would equate to about 800 tons annually. And I think that that is roughly 1,600 cubic yards of material. So on an annual basis, it's very little to add to the overall tonnages or airspace that's consumed at the landfill.
Mr. Kopeck.
Thank you, Scott. And Jen, so do you have a?
Mike.
Sorry. Sorry about that. Do you have a percentage of the contamination factor of the current collectibles from the all-in-one stream?
Jen, answer that one.
The national average is around 30%. Some of the feedback that we get from Minn Kota and those processors is that Fargo is right around 10%. So we still have some work to do, but we are far under the national average.
Thank you.
John, Sustainability, you have something to say?
I'm just more curious, like Commissioner Preston's question, what the impact on the landfill is. You know, what I'm anticipating will happen is people will just start mixing in with their garbage. And it may not as easily get to the land or to the, you know, to the dedicated recycle bins, so. Public education is going to be very important. I believe we all want to be as environmentally supportive and friendly and conscious as possible. And it's kind of contrary to our nature to start not recycling stuff sometimes, I might think, but. So the education is going to be key.
So.
But you can still go to the drop site, right, Scott?
Correct, still goes to the drop sites. And I would like to, I should expand a little bit on my explanation prior to, you know, if the total tonnage is in all-in-one recycling is, again, 800 tons annually. Our total tonnage at the landfill, about 230,000 tons. So the impact is pretty small, about 0.3%. And again, we utilize this as a reuse material in lieu of sand. So when we put this down in the inert sites, that airspace inside the inert site has to be taken up anyway. So we're just replacing what would go in, sand, with crushed glass. So there should be no impact to to overall life.
And Scott, you've got Morehead onboard and you've got Fargo onboard. How about West Fargo? What are they going to do? Just so the population doesn't get confused.
So West Fargo actually contracts their recycling out through a private entity. I'm not sure exactly how that's processed or handled.
So they won't have the same rules?
To my knowledge, not not in.
Thank you. Mr. Pepkorn.
So Mr. Chair, I think this is a good time for us to do some more questions because I think obviously cardboard prices are being impacted as well, which you're aware of. And I think most people were under the intention that all these things are going to be used for products. Go back and like plastics and cardboard. And to me, I think it'd be interesting to know what the carbon footprint is for our current program, and is it efficient? Because now we're shipping our recycling to Minneapolis. That doesn't seem very efficient. Seems like we should be trying to do something here. And like glass, that's, we want it to be repurposed for glass, or at least to me, not to put back in the in the, in our, in our dump. So to me, I think the, it's unfortunate because people are, like John talked about, people are going to start using the program less. And we've, it's been very successful and so. But on the flip side, we should look at this and say, is our money being spent wisely? Is it performing well? And I think that's what we should look at at this time. Because obviously this, you have to do something, but we need to look at all this. Are we, are we spending our money wisely and where is it going? Like to give an example with cardboard, to ship it to Minneapolis, that doesn't make sense to me. Why don't we have some type of system in Fargo to repurpose that? Because imagine, I don't know if it's by truck or by train, but you're using a lot of energy to haul it that far. So I guess those are my things. I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered instead of us just approving this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let them answer, John, first.
Certainly.
Guys, will comment to that, Scott, or anything?
I would say that, you know, we, we do have, we're committed to recycling materials and we like to use, you know, we've been in a relationship with Minn Kota for many years, since the 90s. They've been utilizing that, sending it out. As far as the glass goes, we did have a local facility that did take that glass that closed down 10 years ago, almost a decade ago. So regionally, there's not much available here to, to my knowledge, to reuse that material. And when we went out for the last RFP on the recycling agreement, Minn Kota was the only respondees on that. We don't have the workforce within the city to, to ship and source our own marketing for it. So that's, it's historically been RFPed.
But wasn't there a time in which Morehead was lucky and having to have a site in the Morehead area at one time to do a regional center? And it turned out to be cost-reavative, and that's why it stayed in the cities?
Likely, I, we could have.
Terry probably.
It's here, but.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you. You know, I, I wouldn't have anticipated that when we heard from your department that it would be glass we're talking about. I would have expected plastics. The news out there messaging seems to be that there's just mountains and mountains of plastics that have no place to go. The market is diminishing, I think, for it apparently. They don't know where, you know, so is that next? If we're dealing with glass now, I mean, is that the inevitable? That we're going to have you up here again telling us that plastics are, we can't take them anywhere, we can't do anything with them? I mean, I'm just curious where you see these, these trends going.
You know, markets on those recycling materials is pretty cyclical. I can, I think here somewhere we have, there's one of the, a previous graph from a cardboard market, and you can see how that fluctuates. That's pretty volatile. So when we outsource this, these type of materials to a Minn Kota, it's, you know, we rely on them to market it best they can. We kind of trust their expertise in it. With glass, again, I don't know that we would be fully onboard with supporting this move had we not had a reuse for the material. So if it comes to a plastics next, then we would certainly fight a lot harder on that one.
Any other comments? Mr. Preston.
So I would suggest, and I'd be interested in hearing a little bit more in regards to the future of the landfill and where we're going with it. So if at some point you could provide some kind of report with the regionalization of the landfill, how many years do we have there? You know, what's the plan there? And maybe that was done more than two years ago when I joined the commission. But it would be helpful to, I think, get an update.
Yeah, certainly. We do have a relatively recent facility plan that was done, completed a few years ago. And we can provide you a copy with that. And also, we did go through and do three different studies last year. And those studies included a food waste study to determine the feasibility for, you know, a food waste composting program in the city. We did a trending, an analysis trend to see what is happening kind of regionally and nationally and in terms of solid waste management. And the other one was.
Waste sort?
Waste sort. So we figured out our characteristics in our current waste composition. So we plan to use those three studies and this year get a consultant onboard to kind of help us develop a solid waste management's plan that says, here's what waste we have. Here's the programs that we may implement in the future, and here's what's available to us. So we are, we are planning to work on that and committed to getting that.
So maybe, Scott, you could give, send the reports to all the Commissioners because they could see what you're talking about, get a better idea of length and like.
Yes, absolutely. We just got the finalized reports back on that right at the end of last year, so.
Commissioner Strand.
Help me understand more accurately, but it's my, my sense that Canada has outlawed single-use plastics and China, like plastic bags, single, you know. Well, I'd be in that, I'd be curious to know the bigger trends coming our way or needs that are unfolding before us that we're not just surprised at. And whatever you, your advice is, what you all see coming and what your needs are. So we know that wishlist.
Does a Minn Kota representative know if that's happened? Did Canada get rid of plastic bags?
Um, yes, they have banned plastic bags from Canada, but there's still a lot of bags floating around. It's a very difficult item to exclude. I think the city's done an excellent job in educating people on production and debagging their recycling, which is helping us out tremendously, reducing the amount of contamination in, in the MRF. We are finding plastics are actually marketed, there is 80% of what is generated in the community is sent off and remanufactured into other products again. That 20% is unfortunately.
Can you come, come to the mic so the public could hear? Up here, over there.
Thank you.
Much better.
My name is Mary Aldridge. I'm with Minn Kota Recycling. I've been with the company for 28 years. So I've been with you for a long time in developing your recycling program and your community programs. And I want to tell you how much we appreciate the city taking a look at this issue that we're facing. In the past six months, it's been very challenging for us because we've not just had declining markets. We've had a change in how we can ship and manufacture our recycling. The material used to be dropped off at our facility, go directly into a baler, bailed up and shipped off to Minneapolis where it was sorted and segregated by Demcom and Republic Services. And they changed overnight, called us up and said, we can no longer accept your material baled. It has to be loose, and that is because of economic issues and also labor issues that they're facing in their communities. So we've had to change that. And with that change came the force of us having to look at items such as glass that's very difficult and hard on our equipment. And it represents about 12% of the volume that comes into our facility. So that 12% savings will come back to you. You won't be paying processing fees for that material to be shipped down and segregated. And what we're finding is glass was about 30% of it actually gets landfilled at that point. So only 70% is being recovered in the MRF as well. So we just felt that was kind of an issue and a concern and needs to be addressed by the community and is addressed by many communities throughout the region. New programs that are coming online are not accepting glass. But with that education opportunity, you'll see glass going to the drop sites, and that will actually increase because more businesses will be looking at that because of the education opportunities that you'll be providing by diverting it from single stream. Single stream is a very small percentage of the volume of material. It's the commercial waste that you really need to keep an eye on in regards to your landfill.
Make your comment on plastics as well, please.
On plastic items that come into our facility currently are number one, two, and five plastics. That represents 80% of the volume of material that's generated, and that is shipped off and remanufactured into other products. Minn Kota Recycling primarily uses domestic markets to sell our products. So we are not discarding it, shipping it overseas where we don't know where it ends up. It's very sustainable markets, and I'm sure that will continue to exist. The demand for resins is growing every single day as petroleum prices rise.
And finally, cardboard.
Cardboard represents about 60% of the volume that comes into our facility. Your drop site programs and your commercial programs are extremely strong. That is a very difficult market right now because of the loss of West Rock in St. Paul. They closed their facility, and that took off over 200,000 tons of material in the market overnight. In December, they discontinued accepting material, so we've had to look for alternative markets. And that's very difficult in economic times like this. So we searched out other mills, which are in a thousand-mile radius and started shipping to them. And then they started taking economic downtime. So there's a issue that's ahead of us, and that's the supply issue for them. Most of our material goes to LDI Fibers in Becker, Minnesota. We ship about 60 loads a month to them. And that is being remanufactured into new boxes again. They're a very run, a well-run mill, and they're handling our supply at this time. Green Bay in, Green Bay is accepting material. And also Duluth is looking at an opportunity to expand a paper mill there. We have Pactive in Morehead, Minnesota that accepts all of our newsprint and also accepts some corrugated cardboard because there's not as much newspaper available, so they're looking for alternative fibers. And so we do ship material to them as well. So we do have that local market that we support 100%.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Strand.
If you had a checklist of things we should, could, would do to be the best stewards of the environment we could be, I'm curious what some of those changes would be. And I'm also curious, would you ban plastic bags? If you, if you just could?
Well, we'd like to ban them from ending up in our facility, but it seems like it's a very difficult task to ban material in this region.
And it's illegal right now in the state.
Yeah, it is, I guess. Yeah, that is, that is true. But you know, the biggest item is probably education and educating people on what's acceptable and what's not. And I think the City of Fargo does an outstanding job, along with Morehead and Clay County, to educate the community because our recycling programs are much more successful than other. to educate the community because our recycling programs are much more successful than other communities.
Thank you. Scott and Jen, great presentation, did a nice job, and you kept it under two hours, Jen. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of the Commissioners? You give us food for thought, and I think it's going to be further discussion. I think for the Commissioners' interest, we may want to have a report at a commission sometime, just to educate the public to what's going on with the landfill and such. So I think this has been great. Thank you.
Thank you.